I'd like to welcome everybody to the Duba Board of Alderman Meeting for June 11th of 2019. Tonight, prayer will be given by Alderman Johnny Ray Kinsey.
Good afternoon. Ms. Sampson, would you come to the podium, please? Ms. Sampson's going to open up prayer for the Board of Alderman tonight.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, everybody. Heavenly Father, in the body, pure and holy, in the precious name of Jesus. Father, we thank you, Heavenly Father, for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. But most of all, we thank you for your son, who died on the cross for us, and he but have a right and title to your life. And the Father has a special blessing for this meeting tonight, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, let's touch everybody, Heavenly Father. Lord, bless the officials, Heavenly Father. Oh, God, please break with us a criminean heart, Lord. Lord, please renew a right spirit within us, Heavenly Father. Father, we do business, Heavenly Father, let us be mindful of our sisters and brothers. We thank you, Heavenly Father, and we ask you, please, to continue to forgive us, Heavenly Father, if we are wronged, our sisters and brothers. We thank you now, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Blessed Holy Ghost. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with a liberty and justice for all. Anna Flurp, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Almeyer, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Best, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Okay, at this time, before we get started on request petitions, does the board have any changes on the agenda? Seeing none, the request of petitions assistance tonight, Barbara. Sampson, would you like to come up and make some comments, if you would? It's your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Giving honor to God and all these great people of New Bern. I was, we were trying, I'm trying to talk to you again about Stanley White, Red Sun, located on Chapman Street. Be still, it's still in our mind to leave Stanley White where it's at. If you can't rebuild it, we want you to remodel it to the status that it's supposed to be. But we don't want to go anywhere but on Chapman Street. We have to change our stance on that, and we will not change our stance on that. And we would like for you all to keep us in touch about what's going on. Don't keep, don't let us be in the dark when you all make a decision. Because our decision already been made, what we want to do. Because Stanley White is a great part of our community. I played basketball there. My children played basketball there. And my mother's great-grandchildren played basketball there. And it helps the young people in the community to have somewhere to go. And we do not need to move anywhere but where it's at. Because it would walk into, it would be in walking distance. You, the people can use the scrollers to push. If they have a bike, they can ride a bike, they can walk. And we just like to see that our place do not go down in flames. Build it up to the status it's supposed to be built up to. The feet that it's supposed to be going to go, we want it like that. We want you add, if you need to add some rooms, add some rooms. We're not just asking for our community, we're asking for everyone. Everyone can come to Stanley White and have arts, crafts. We have anything or anything that you want to do, any kind of meeting you want to have. It's a good place for all of us to meet. So we ask you again, we are pleading with you again. Leave Stanley White where it's at. You either rebuild it to the status it's supposed to be rebuilt, or remodel it. And this is not a white thing, it's not a black thing. It's the right thing to do, and thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, um, the, I just want to make a comment. I think the last meeting, my words were misinterpreted or misunderstood. When I made the statement about the options for different locations for Stanley White, it was just the point of letting it be known that you have options. But like I stated at the last meeting, I support whatever the community wants to do. And if building back Stanley White, it's building back Stanley White in that same location, then that's what I'm going to vote for. But it's my duty as the Alderman that sits and represents this ward to make sure you know every viable option when it comes to the dealing with the FEMA, dealing with insurance, and dealing with the location of Stanley White. So that's all that I'm doing. Again, I support whatever the community wants to do. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to the consent agenda.
May I like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as is?
Second.
Motion second, is there discussion?
Just a question. Does the minutes need to address the amended change?
Ma'am, it's been circulating and no one had any.
So it would be okay to just say we adopt the consent agenda as is, correct? Okay. No, I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Davis, with resolutions, would you like a roll call or just a voice vote?
Resolution, please. Out, voice vote.
Voice vote. Okay, this time, say have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said, you said voice vote, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say motion carries. Let's go to item number seven, recognition of graduates.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number seven is recognition of our graduates of the Citizens Police Academy. As you know, we do this yearly. This last academy marked the 23rd session that has been held. And tonight, some of our graduates are in attendance. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the chief and his staff to recognize these graduates of our police academy.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the board, Officer Rainey, who was the class coordinator, will make a few statements and introduce our class president.
Good evening, my name is Detective Rainey, and I am proud to introduce the 23rd class of the Citizens Police Academy. These students have successfully completed a 10-week program instructed by numerous officers and civilian personnel of the New Bern Police Department. During their time with us, they were exposed to every aspect of the police department, such as patrol operations, narcotics and gang education, roles of support staff, and even firearm and safety education. Meeting every Thursday night for 10 weeks, the citizens learned about what it takes to run an agency and were given our new perspective on police matters and also on issues that we face on a daily basis. These citizens come from all over our city and now possess the knowledge and ability to make a positive impact in our community and to help educate others about our department. I would now like to introduce the class president, Mr. Peter Dillon.
Good evening, my name is Peter Dillon, I live at 116 Arbat Lane in New Bern. And I was voted, well, actually, I volunteered. I should have learned in the military, never volunteer, but I volunteered to be the president of our 23rd class. Not going to, not going to speak a lot, just, just some high points for you. I'm going to say I was exceptionally impressed by the members of our police department. They, they conducted themselves very well. It's, it's interesting and very, very satisfying to meet the people behind the badge, if you will. Each one of them, and I'm going to say without, without reservation, each one of them demonstrated to me their sense of purpose. These, these are a bunch of dedicated people. They, they like what they do. They have a tough job. I was, I was kind of amazed at the hours that they're, that they have to work. You know, 12-hour shifts are kind of hard in a stress-filled situation. But each one of them had a good attitude. Each one of them had a good attitude about what they do, what they, what function they perform at the police department. I was also impressed with their sense of fiscal responsibility. If I heard it once, I heard it five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times of, "Well, you know, we have a budget, we have to stay within our budget, we have to do this, we have to do that." They could have complained to us, I mean, they had a bunch of citizens in front of them. They could have complained to us and said, "Gee whiz, we really need more funding, we need more of this, we need more of that." But none of them really did that. They just mentioned, I guess in passing, if you will, the fact that, you know, that they are responsible for the budget, they know what, they know what they can spend, and they, and they try to stay within that. I was also impressed with all of the people who support the police. And I'm talking about the civilian people in the, in the police department itself. Tough job, very tough job. I mean, I was amazed, we, you know, in addition to touring the police department, of course, we also got to go to the Craven County Cretschel, or jail. And again, a group of dedicated people who tried to do the right thing, who are, who are doing the right thing. What you can be proud of, as, as the city council in New Bern and the mayor, is that the sheriff even mentioned, he said, "You know, New Bern does some things that we need to copy, that we need to, we need to work with them and find out how New Bern does it because they do it better than we do." I was also struck by, by the hazards that, that they all endure. To the, to, to, to the point of, of things like, when we, when we looked in the evidence room, the people who run the, in the evidence room and who actually work in there, no one person goes in there by themselves because of the potential hazard of all of these wonderful new drugs that, that have been introduced into this country. You know, you have this fentanyl stuff where if you breathe in the powder, it can kill you. And so what happens is, no one person goes in there by themselves. You know, they, they make sure that it's a buddy system of, "Go in there, do what you have to do, but if you don't come out right away, I'm going to come in and find out what happened to you." And again, I, I guess, the best thing I can say is, I think that we are lucky as a city to have, to have this group of people working with us. I'm not, I don't think I, I met any one of them that, that I wouldn't really like to be friends with, if you will. And also, they impressed me with their professionalism and their spirit and what they know about, about what they do as police officers. The amazing technologies that they have to master, the, the knowledge they have to have constitutional law to make sure they don't make a mistake that affects, you know, further downstream in the law enforcement process is really, really amazing. And for my fellow citizens in the room here, and for anybody who, who, you know, all the different Aldermen, you know, we have this National Night Out coming up pretty soon. And as far as I'm concerned, I know, I live in Taberna, and we are going to really roll out the red carpet for our folks that show up there. But I think that every neighborhood, and I went to the meeting for the National Night Out, every neighborhood seems to have a really good plan. And I think that every neighborhood really needs to turn out and show up for both our police and fire department personnel and congratulate them and thank them for their service. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the board, I invite you to come down and shake the hands of the graduates that we have here tonight. First is Nancy Humphrey. Jennifer Zerby. Robert Burns. And once again, our class president, Mr. Peter Dillon.
Yes. We had a total of 13 in class, but some couldn't make it tonight. Hundred pictures.
Mayor, can I make just a quick comment? I'm, this program has been such an excellent program within our city for many years, and we should be very proud of the citizens that come and engage. What I, I've wanted to do for a long time and maybe going forward, I really like to start a citizens' academy for government.
Yes.
And do the same thing that these citizens do in the police department, but so that they can come and learn about our water department and electric department and all the different departments in our city. And that really helps our citizens become more engaged and understand what we have to understand. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm sure you don't need one more thing on your plate, but I surely, maybe after the first of the year or something, we can look at potentially starting a citizens' academy based on the same idea and principles that we have for the police academy.
Put me on that, and I'll go.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. We need one more. Anyway, anyway.
What would be the legal process to do that? That would be just a standing committee, or?
Well, you just get the city manager to give them direction to set it up.
I think if you, the board's amenable and they want to give me direction, we'll come up with a proposal of a, a plan, and I'll update the board on it, and then we can move forward with our first, first section.
Is there a way we can incorporate the youth in that, like a youth council?
Um, it, I guess as far as attendees?
Yeah.
Whomever wants to sign up and attend can attend. I think you do have to cut it off at a certain number of people, but obviously, that's something that we can definitely do.
Okay. Awesome, great.
Okay, this time's good, item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number eight is to conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of 2409 Oaks Road from R6S Residential District to C3 Commercial District. After that public hearing, the board would need to also consider whether to adopt a statement of zoning consistency and the ordinance rezoning 2409 Oaks Road. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Potts. She is going to give the board a brief overview of this rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good evening, everyone. This parcel has historically been utilized as a commercial establishment prior to the hurricane, and it would provide neighborhood amenities for the surrounding residential area. There are C3 parcels zoned across the street, multiple parcels across the street from the requested site. We do have a site map attached in your packet for a reference. I do have a very brief PowerPoint presentation for you all. The owner is Mr. Nasser Al-Gharadi. They're requesting to go from R6S Residential to C3 Commercial, it's approximately a quarter acre. Right now, it is vacant ever since the hurricane, but it was formerly utilized as a non-conforming residential, non-conforming commercial establishment. He would like to operate a convenience store. That's what it was historically utilized for prior to the storm. All these city services are available. I must note that it is within the 100-year AE flood zone. You can see the site map. The site is the hatched blue, and there is C3 located across the street. There's also some down the, down the road towards the west.
Can I ask a question? So, everything in yellow is residential, is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
So the yellow is residential, the pink?
The pink is commercial.
C3, and the blue would be C5?
Looks like it, yes, ma'am, that's correct. And the orangey golden rod color is also residential as well.
Before you go, Father, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The R6S, is that zoned that way to keep out mobile homes?
It's zoned R6S single-family residential. As far as mobile homes go, let me ask Mr. Sebior regarding that. One second, please.
Yes, the R6S zoning district, the main distinction between it and a normal R6 district is that mobile homes are not allowed there.
Okay, right, thank you.
As we look, that is the site in and of itself, it's vacant currently. This is looking to the north, you can see that it is commercial uses directly across the street. I gave you an aerial view to the south because it's completely undeveloped. There's nothing to see except for trees presently. This is looking to the east. There are some residences towards that direction, down the road. And to the west, there is also residences as well. City staff recommended rezoning because it has historically been utilized as a commercial use. Planning and zoning board did recommend approval five to one of the rezoning to C3. And that's the end of my presentation this evening.
Okay, any other staff presentation, if not at this time? We're having a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments, statements. Concerning this item, you're more than welcome to come up, state your name and address and ready.
My name is Mark Rafferty. I live at 2007 Alabama Avenue in New Bern. I'm a member of that community. I was glad to see somebody rehabbing the building after Florence. And just to give a little forward, we're still struggling in that neighborhood. We're struggling with some, some criminal element and some people squatting in homes near our residence. I mean, we can look right out of our front door and see people squatting in old barns and houses and stuff. The police have done a really good job of coming in the area and taking care of that. Well, one day, I was driving down Oaks Road, and I passed the, the building that was being refurbished, and I stopped in there and said, "Hey, what are you guys doing in here?" Yeah, I said, "We're putting a tobacco smoke shop." So that's not consistent with what I just saw on the slides, it's a convenience store. So if it's a convenience store, I'm great, but a smoke shop, you know, I, I know what smoke shops are and the types of devices they sell. That's, that lends itself to, to a criminal element. And I, on behalf of myself and some concerned neighbors, I'm here tonight to address the mayor and the board regarding this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else from the public would like to come up, make any comments? More than welcome to come up.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second, close public hearing. Is there any discussion on that item?
Yes, I want to bring home a few here of that property.
We can do that after we close public hearing. Okay, we had the motion second, and any other items? We'll, we'll do that after, but close the hearing. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say motion carries. So at this time, the board can have discussion on this item.
You can answer the question as to if this gentleman, if this person owns any other businesses in this city? And what type of businesses are they?
He's present this evening, if you would like for him to come forward, because I don't have an answer for that. One second, please.
Uh, it's not me, it's my bad, but his English is not good, so I'll speak for him. We do own a couple of convenience stores in Sunnyside and Oaks Road, the other side.
How do you, how do you pronounce your last name again? That was your last name?
Oh, Algaradi, Madeline Algaradi.
Okay. I just want to ask you a couple of questions, because I know that you, you or your father owns a location at 1509 National Avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's a convenience store?
Yes, ma'am.
You sell tobacco products and alcohol in that location?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you also own the, I think it was 30?
34.
3419 Oaks Ro, uh, Oaks Road Glen Burnie?
Yes, ma'am.
As well, and you sell alcohol and tobacco in that location as well?
Yes, ma'am.
So now, this potential property at 2409 Oaks Road, what type of business will be located there, may I ask?
I would guess it would be a tobacco with a drive-through.
It's going to be a tobacco shop with drive-through?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, sir, I'm, I'm really concerned with the neighbors, the residents within that area. I, I don't think that a tobacco shop at that location would be a benefit to the welfare of this, of the residents within that community. And the reason why I say that is because you have two residential properties on each side of that location. And what type of, you said drive-through, so of course, we're going to have some noise. So what hours of operation are you going to be at particular location, 2409?
I'll be from, we're still deciding, but she'll be from like 8 to 8. We will not go over at night.
So another question for you. If you already have two locations within, I'm going to say, a mile, mile and a half of each other from National Avenue to Oaks Road, why would you want to put another location right there in that particular area? I mean, that would be three in that area. And you already sell tobacco, and you already sell alcohol in your two, other two locations.
We, it's like, customers have been asking for a drive-through. The closest drive-through is like far away, so that's why I put it there.
Well, that, that, and the reason why I'm asking you these questions is because that is, that particular location is in Ward 5, and I'm the Alderman for Ward 5. And I've had different residents come to me and complain about that location. It's right there on, on the road. You're going to have a drive-through, which is going to be a noise factor. You're going to have customers, which is going to be a noise factor. And you've got residents that live in that area that don't feel that that is what they need for that location. And I personally, you know, I don't want to stop any business from coming to this city because it provides jobs and it provides a tax base for us. But in this essence, I have to, I just don't feel strong about what this location is going to provide for the citizens.
Understood.
So thank you for this.
Okay, Mr. Davis, at this time, would you kind of refresh the board on what procedurally we should be discussing and, and not with Jermaine to decide?
Yes, Mayor members of the board, the, a zoning change is a legislative process whereby you consider the, the burden on the surrounding area consistent with the proposed zone. The proposed use is not relevant to the analysis. If this were a proposed dry cleaner business, and everyone loved dry cleaners, the owner could get the zoning change and change their use the next day to anything else. The zone is the zone. So you're not approving or denying any particular use. By converting this from a residential to a commercial zone, you're allowing every commercial use potentially.
Thanks, sir. Our questions, comments concerning the board on this particular item.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does staff have a, you may not have it ready to show, but could you give us an idea of what some permissible uses would be under C3 so we can have a better idea of what could be?
Yeah, so the C3 zoning district is one of our more permissive zoning districts and allows all types of residential. It allows most types, all types of commercial. It allows, um, most types, all types of commercial uses, um. So, for instance, you'll get, um, offices in the C three zone for physicians or doctors, you'll get drive-throughs. You can have a bowling alley there, a movie theater, um, different types of storage and parking uses. You can have restaurants and uses of that nature, uh, you can have a post office, uh, just, there's a very wide range of available uses in that district.
Thank you, and just could staff clarify that this has historically been used as a commercial property, but there was a lapse in time where it lost that designation, is that what I understand?
Yes, that's correct, so for a very long time, this was operated as a convenience store in the community, and then there was a discontinuation of that use. And, uh, at some point in between, when it was initially started to be used as a commercial property, that whole area got rezoned, and this property got caught in that rezoning. Um, I don't, I wasn't around then, so I don't know the details of whether that was deliberate or not. But it's now got a residential designation when it has historically been used as a commercial property, and the building on the site is obviously constructed with commercial intent.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, do we know how close the school is in proximity from the proposed location of a tobacco shop in the school?
I'm not aware of that right now, no.
Cause it's right down the street, yeah, it is. Right down the street.
My comment, um, I will, I will vote no on this, and I always try to, um, explain myself. In doing my research, and you're right, Mr. Sevor, um, it was, it was a coun- that was the country to the city of New Bern back in the day, and people, there were no zoning laws, and that's why it had a commercial, it was a, a family convenience store, a, a country store. And then it, it did have some other very quiet, um, commercial uses, I think somebody operated a gym out of there, somebody used it for storage. But it is, in most cases, if you look to the left and right of that property, it is all residential. I've been out there, um, I've, I've talked to the people that own the properties on either side, they are empty right now, but it is residential. And, you know, I think, uh, the Oaks Road and the neighborhood, as the gentleman, uh, put previously, who lives on Alabama Avenue, has really gotten beaten up. And if we don't start holding our feet to the fire in some of these neighborhoods, we're never gonna get them right. Just cause it was that way before doesn't mean that it was right. So, um, I will be voting no against this change tonight because of that reason, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. So, I'm gonna do my comment too, um, I'm gonna be voting no, just because I don't feel like that is the highest and best use, um, for that property and that location and that community and, you know, all of the other issues and the fact that the citizens that represent that area, some have spoken and sent us emails saying that they don't support that in the neighborhood, and that's what we're here for, is to, you know, stand up for the voiceless, so I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, we know the discussion, but we'll just.
One more question, one more question for staff, do we have any sort of overlay for Oaks Road like we do some of the other commercial corridors? So, in my opinion, the, the zoning aspect is about whatever the vision is for that area. And I'm assuming since the majority of this is residential, that whenever the city annexed it many years ago, the vision was for it to be residential. For us to come back and start changing that now to commercial means that we've had a change in what our vision is for that area. And I think along with that, you have to consider things such as the infrastructure in that area. I don't think personally that Oaks Road is set up to be a commercial corridor, um, so I will most likely vote no as well, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, um, just to answer that question, uh, so, point two five miles from the property to.
Okay, I was about to map question. Appreciate you.
Okay.
Two point five miles.
Quarter mile.
Two five?
A quarter mile.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion that, to, uh, rezone Craven County Parcel, um, eight zero nineteen zero eight from R six S residential district to a C three commercial district, property further identified as twenty four oh nine Oaks Road.
Let me make sure I heard your motion, your, your motion is to what?
To rezonate.
Is, is to rezonate?
Yes.
Yeah, we, waiting for a second on that.
Can I go second?
Okay, I'd like to just, uh, say, I think, uh, the motion dies from like a second. Are we, we're, you have a motion?
Can I, real quick, can I interject? Just as a point of process, uh, the board needs to consider the statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency first. So, if you determine that this is consistent with what the intent, intended use is, commercial in that residential area, then you need to adopt a statement of consistency. If you feel that it is not consistent with, then you need to adopt a statement of inconsistency with what the intended, uh, purpose is in that area. And then do the rezoning or don't do the rezoning, one of the two.
Okay, so I will.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make motion that, to consider adopting a statement of zoning inconsistency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
And I wanna make clear she did say inconsistency.
Seeing the further discussion, we'll have a roll call starting with Alderman Dingell.
Alderman Dingell?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Davis, do you need for item number B?
Let's go ahead and just get a clear record that, that the, um, the request is being denied, if that's gonna be, if that's gonna be the motion.
Need a motion to not adopt an ordinance rezoning twenty four oh nine Oaks Road?
Motion to deny the request to change this zoning.
To not adopt it, or deny it.
Are you making it?
No.
No, 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 I'm not making it, I'm just saying, we, we would need that motion.
Yes, I'd like to make motion that, um, consider adopting an ordinance, uh, rezoning twenty four oh nine Oaks Road, um, with.
To deny.
That was denied in, for inconsistency of zoning.
I don't think you have to put in there, you know, it's inconsistent.
Just a motion to deny this rezoning request for twenty four oh nine Oaks Road.
Was that your motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Seeing on this, have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Atwell? Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Dingell?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number nine.
Senator Mayor, item number nine is, uh, considering the board adopt a resolution proving the FY nineteen through FY twenty three CDBG five-year consolidated plan and the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual action plan. These plans have been made available for public review and comment since the tenth of May two thousand nineteen. Public hearing was held on the fourth of June two thousand nineteen, no questions or comments were received. The board is now asked to approve both of these plans, there's a memo that included from Ms. Fullmore, uh, our community development coordinator, and it's attached along with a copy of the plans, uh, for your review and consideration. Staff and I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
I think, I think the board on this specific item, we've all got a copy of this, I think we're gonna wanna go through it a little bit. And, um, it'd be nice for, uh, maybe a cursory, uh, overview by staff of, of what we're dealing here, uh, dealing with. And then, uh, we're probably gonna have some questions for you.
All right, um, just wanna give you a brief overview of the process regarding, um, the formulation of the five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan. As you know, the city of New Bern is an entitlement community under the, uh, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development's, um, Community Development Block Grant, um, program. So I may use the acronym HUD for, um, Housing and Urban Development and CDBG for Community Development Block Grant. So those, um, that's a mouthful. But basically, the five-year consolidated plan helps establish the city's goals over the next five years regarding initiatives that the city will undertake to address its needs and objectives by promoting the rehabilitation and construction of decent, safe, sanitary and affordable housing, creating a suitable living environment, removing slum and blight, um, conditions, and furthering fair housing, improving public services, expanding economic opportunities, and principally benefiting low to moderate income individuals. The annual action plan assesses, um, the expected resources to address those specific needs outlined in the five-year plan and develop specific strategies to meet those goals. The city's CDBG allocation is for each fiscal year, and we create a budget for each specific project. And this funding, of course, benefits low to moderate income persons living inside the city. The plan requires an assessment of a variety of different, um, uh, statistics, and we create projects basically to improve the quality of life, um, for those living in the community. As far as the planning process goes, um, this was a multi-month, um, planning process. The city hired a consultant, Urban Design Ventures, out of Homestead, um, Pennsylvania, who worked, um, with us on this collaborative plan. It required a lot of citizen input, um, and we collected data through interviewing, um, stakeholders and, um, survey responses. Stakeholder meetings were, um, involved to inter- interview the Community Development Advisory Committee, various city housing providers, human and social service agency providers, as well as major employers, police, fire, EMS, our parks and recreation departments, our public works, public utilities, um, departments, as well as our redevelopment commission members. Through a series of interviews, um, and in, in-person meetings, responses were collected, and those have all been included in the five-year, um, consolidated plan, and developed the strategies that are, um, shown in, in the annual action plan. We actually had our highest, um, survey, um, responses today, we had over five hundred people respond, and all of those have been incorporated into the plan. And we had over twenty-five agencies that participated in the process as well. I'll highlight some of the, um, the major objectives in the annual action plan, which would begin July first of two thousand nineteen. The plan itself addresses the need for transportation and public facility improvements, as well as housing affordability. Addressed in the annual action plan, one of the city's goals is to, um, put funding toward, um, transportation and public facility improvements in the amount of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-three. This plan, um, or this strategy will address, um, the design and construction of, um, six bus shelters in partnership with Carts, Craven Area Rule Transit. And these shelters will specifically address, um, locations for our low to moderate income population.
What year are, is that, are you thinking about that implementation, what year?
That would be in the upcoming, um, program year nineteen.
So you get like the round figures, three hundred thousand bucks a year?
Yeah, so, um, the, the program year nineteen allocation will be two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, two forty-three eight hundred, basically, is the amount that will be funded, um, and we have received that notice from HUD. Sometimes that fluctuates, but we do know, um, for that program year, it'll be around two hundred and forty-three.
And how would you sustain that, would you use that same amount out of community block each year to sustain it?
No, not necessarily, we would not have to use the same amount, the hundred and eighty thousand dollars proposed to erect those structures would not necessarily, um, be used, you know, again, for, are you talking about maintenance and things like that?
I'm not sure what I'm talking about, because I, I don't have a broad sense of what that transportation.
Like, well, I don't think, the money doesn't go towards transportation. All this money, this is just going to build shelters.
Right, infrastructure.
My concern is, is there not anything going, because the transportation does, system doesn't meet the needs of the citizens. Why would we spend the money, build shelters if we can't, we need that money to be able to pick up people where they need to be and need to go.
Part of what it is in collaboration to expand those, those bus routes and have shelters in the places that people are asking for them.
Right, so, does that mean that you've coordinated this with the county and the Carts program to expand the number of stops?
We are currently working to develop the plan, yes. And we actually have, um, in response to Hurricane Florence, um, and the needs of our citizens, we actually have done a major amendment to our CDBG, um, annual action plan to add more affordable housing stock, um, here in the city, um, to address those that have been displaced due to flooding, you know, to construct, um, homes, um, to address affordable housing. Unfortunately, um, you know, two hundred and forty thousand dollars does not necessarily go that far for some of those projects. But collaboratively, we're trying to look at solutions to best use those funds and address what the responses were from the community.
So if, um, I, I know that some aldermen have been on that route, uh, Mr. Davis, I know you've been and other aldermen, if tomorrow you put any infrastructure in and, and a couple of years later, the market kinda changed for the demand for rides, what would you do about relocation of those shelters, et cetera, would you, have you thought of?
It's, it's proposed to be in, in five locations, um, at the present time, um, that are, are heavily used and thinking about, um, you know, needs and, and the access points, um, that would be kind of consistent for citizens. So, you know, the, the most used points and the ones that would, you know, we feel, um, this would have the most benefit.
I, I think it's, I think it's great that there's an opportunity to provide some funding for that. There's a, a subcommittee of the MPO that's working with Carts, um, to basically revamp the whole program. I know that, um, the county, I believe it's maybe September the sixth, it's their first meeting of the month. They're actually going to be discussing the whole Carts program, um, on the future of that, because there's a lot of opportunity there that we're missing out on. But it's good to know that, uh, there's an opportunity for some funding, because bus stops and shelters is definitely one of the needs that was addressed through our committee.
Also, also, I think this is also being discussed by the redevelopment commission, boys, the Carts systems, with getting some aid and help.
They did have them come in, that would be my other question. So, with the redevelopment commission and looking at blighted areas and affordable houses, is a portion of this money appropriated to that, so that some of the goals and objectives can be met?
Yeah, so, the five-year plan will be kind of the roadmap of the goal, you know, the, the longer-range five-year, um, um, objectives that we'd like to accomplish. We have the ability within the annual action plan to kind of shift which, um, priorities we're gonna be working on. So in subsequent years, we could certainly look at opportunities, um, for developing more housing or, um, you know, addressing, uh, rental housing, housing rehab, um, you know, so there's a lot of things that have been discussed that can be shifted in, in future program years.
So can you access more funds, so right now, the funds would be up to maybe three hundred thousand a year for five years. But is it possible that, you know, in next year, you know, we have something, can we up that money, up that request, go back to them, or we're stuck at this level?
We're stuck, HUD tells you how much you are going to get as an entitlement community, and it's been around two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the last few years. There's no real way to request more, um, they could decrease the amount that we're allocated, um, you know, but right now, um, it, it stayed the same basically as what it was in, in the previous year.
And my other question is, the CDBG disaster funds, those are separate from these?
That's completely separate, yes.
But we're still applying for those and working towards those, yes?
Yeah, so the CDBG, um, DR funds or disaster recovery funds, um, will be something that will be funneled from the federal government down to the states, um, as I understand. And thus far, there isn't a program in place of exactly how that will work. My understanding is that those, those are a little less restrictive as far as meeting, um, the requirements that HUD has on this particular, on this particular fund.
I know further down, uh, in here, I, we'll, we'll get to some other question, I know other aldermen are gonna have. Part of what I, the reason I wanna really talk about this Sunday night, all eighty-five pages or whatever, is that one thing struck me about this particular item is that, one thing that's kind of missing is the, is more discussion by the systems about the block grant. Part of that, again, goes back to the elevator or lack thereof, and, uh, Ms. Sampson, I'm sure you'd like for us to get an elevator up here, but. And, you know, seriously, there's a lot of residents that, you know, right here, we are trying to conduct city government, and we probably, you know, uh, have limitations on how much participation our, our systems have because of our, our non-compliance with the ADA. how much participation our systems have because of our noncompliance with the ADA. So I've talked with several folks about this. Is there any way under block grant or anything that we can get any type of assistance grant-wise for elevator, for city hall?
I'm not specifically sure related to this block grant funding, because you have to address specific needs for low to moderate income persons. There may be other grant opportunities regarding, you know, improving accessibility within our city in general. I don't know that that would necessarily fit for this funding, you know, but certainly we could pursue, you know, other grant sources that might, might help accomplish that at a lesser burden financially on the city.
Amanda, I'm sorry that we're asking you so many questions, but my other question is, is the meetings that you had, so you had to have these meetings. I noticed that it was usually only one person from the category, you know, a category. So for the redevelopment commission, you only had Commissioner Cho. Were the others not invited? Why was it not a participation by the whole commission, sitting with the consultant and the other people? Because if I look at this, pretty much the remarks are the same throughout, basically, what the needs and the wants are. I noticed that, you know, major industries, you only had one person attending it, and it was the hospital. Where's Moen or anybody else or Hatteras, you know? How did you decide that it was only one person to get into the discussion? I just think that's kind of lax, and, you know, we have so many people that I'm sure would have participated. I'm just curious.
Yeah, a wide range of people were invited to each of those kind of stakeholder committee meetings. So we invited a multitude of individuals and agencies, different companies and social service agencies to participate. The consultant came and conducted in-person interviews, and we spent many, many hours in our conference room, having those sessions with those different stakeholder groups. Unfortunately, some of it may have come down to scheduling. Some of those service agencies did provide survey responses to us, and those have been included in the plan. So unfortunately, we invited, we sent emails to invite and made personal phone calls to try to boost attendance. Sometimes it just came down to scheduling.
Well, I think this is really important, because this is how we can fund our minority communities and get the lower-income segment working. And I think we should do everything possible to try to get people to these sessions, because their input is valuable, and we need to be hearing from many, not a few. So I would like to see us. And I understand it is hard scheduling, but it could be that, you know, you would fix it so that, you know how it is in the doodle pole out, you know, figure out when the best time to do it.
And we certainly try to accomplish that, and actually, our consultant, Urban Design Ventures, you know, their expertise is administering these programs and helping communities work through developing these plans. They were actually very impressed with the participation from the various different stakeholder groups and the citizens in general. Having over 500 survey responses is still excellent.
Yeah.
So did they pretty much fill out this questionnaire? Did they do that, pretty much all this information?
Yes, yes. So we had an agency survey that went out to the provider agencies, and then also an individual resident survey to get feedback from our citizens.
What kind of ballpark of expenditures that have that done, an outside source?
We went out for RFP, and UDV, Urban Design Ventures, was the lowest bidder. I do believe it was around $25,000. I would have to go back and look for sure.
I noticed on page five, it says that the city, the city prepares its consolidated annual performance evaluation report. It said that we only expended 9.79% of funds, and the average, I think it was like 15%, is actually statutory, well, that's a statutory maximum. The city is not meant to require 1.5 maximum drawdown ratio. And I think a lot of that has to do with the hurricane. So is, for the ensuing years, do we play catch-up, or does HUD understand the situation we had in New Bern and the reasoning behind that?
Yes, we've been in communication with HUD to let them know what our experience was here. And yes, basically, we catch up, and then each subsequent year, we will use whatever allocation that we receive.
Let's see, I had a couple of other questions on my... Housing needs assessment. It says that housing, this is the concern I had, that the public should be concerned or aware of, population increase from 2015 was 691 persons, but the housing supply decreased by 710 households. And the city of New Bern is experiencing in-migration from other parts of the country. The poor housing stock is being demolished without replacement. And this data does not reflect the flooding, which also would add to that. So again, this is probably, I think, probably one of the most important things that this board will adopt this year, and there's just a lot of this type of information, which kind of points out the lack of affordable housing. It also mentions, page 39, quite a bit about, with the hurricane, probably 1,000 units now.
Absolutely.
And what can we do? And of course, I hope as much as we can do to expedite the redevelopment commission into our inventory of lots and our encouragement of public investment. There's a lot of things that come out of this report that are not to be funded by a community block grant that need to be addressed by this city council.
That's what's my concern too, because in your first, in your executive summary, it said the city will undertake to address its needs and objectives by promoting the rehab and construction of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing, create a suitable living environment, removing slums and blighted conditions, improving public services. But $200,000, you know, it's difficult to make those statements when you don't have the funds behind it. And, you know, really, what is the plan? What's the priority? You know, is it going to be the shelters? If that's all we can do, that's the priority, then I don't want to mislead anybody who think we're taking on these programs when we really don't have the funds to do it. So that was my concern in the opening statement.
On page 87, "The application for the demolition of Trent Court will be submitted for demolition..." Now, is this consulting ABC saying all this?
That was information from a response that they...
This is information collected from the Housing Authority Incorporated to the report. "Application for demolition of Trent Court will be submitted for demolition in two phases, which will not be done without, with, it will not be done with FEMA funding in spite of the 108 units damaged in the storm. The 108 units rent residents affected by the flooding have been given tenant protective vouchers and have found other housing. And the Housing Authority will be responsible for the relocations of the tenants in the second phase of demolitions, which will include the remaining Trent Court buildings." Again, this is information that somebody needs to be reading this. "During the demolition of Trent Court, the Housing Authority will work to build 84 units of affordable housing on Carolina Avenue, and has already submitted an application for this development. 18 to 22 residents of Trent Court will be able..." Now, this is, again, the concern, because I've heard, under certain scenarios, we might get as many as 40 to 50 residents, but this says clearly that you've got 108 that are totally damaged right now. You're talking about the demolition, but of the new proposed improvements, 9% tax credits Carolina Avenue, under what evidently the Housing Authority is saying, which I thought I'd heard, Sabrina, who came up with the 40 to 50 units?
No, it's, you mean, not Carolina Avenue? No, it's only, is it 20% it's going to be? 24 units as well?
But I don't know if that was hurricane-related or something, that you could step that up?
No.
Well, I thought it was said that the whole unit could be affordable housing if that was left up to the developer.
Not for Trent Court, no.
No, Carolina Avenue.
Well, yeah, it's affordable housing, but 18 to 24 units will be for public housing persons who reside in public housing. The rest of it will be based on income or, you know, at different levels.
Sort of, that's what I'm saying, all 84 units would be for affordable housing.
Well, it's called, yeah, it is called affordable housing, but 84 units of Trent Court will not move.
I might have heard a consultant, I don't remember who said that, that could be stepped up to 40 to 50 residents could transfer, but I certainly don't have that right.
I heard that whole unit could be stepped up to that. And I think that was given by the attorney.
Are we talking about the same meeting that I was at?
Talking about different meetings.
With Trent Court in Carolina, and you were discussing the...
Okay, okay. All right. Well, Amanda?
Yes.
Within this plan here, have you broken it out per year of how many houses, how many affordable housings will be built?
We have not necessarily... Or started? We have not necessarily broken it out. So this is our five-year comprehensive consolidated plan and our annual action plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Subsequently, yes, we will have to file an annual action plan each year, and we report back to HUD what we have accomplished. But we don't necessarily know at this point that we will receive the same amount of funding next year.
So bottom of page 87, again, quite a bit of very important reading for all aldermen and residents. "The Trent Court site, again, I assume you're getting this information from the Housing Authority, will be developed with a mix of lots, condominiums, market rate rentals, retail, and affordable housing, and that green space will be developed along the River Walk." So other than you guys getting that information, you're just reporting in your block grant information you're getting from the Housing Authority?
Yes, from the Housing Authority and other agencies that responded.
I only have one other thing I want to mention on page 151. And again, this is probably some things I probably ought to be asking the Housing Authority, but being that it's in your report, I'm just going to make you aware of. "The Housing Authority City of New Bern is not rated as a troubled agency by HUD." And then two pages over, as we continue, it says, "The Housing Authority of the City of New Bern is designated as a troubled housing authority." So page 151, "The Housing Authority City of New Bern is not rated as a troubled agency by HUD." And on page 153, "The Housing Authority City of New Bern is designated as a troubled housing authority." I just, as the mayor and I'm sure the governing board itself, would like somebody to explain how you can not be rated troubled by HUD, but designated as troubled. I guess that's more, I'll need to ask a lawyer to answer that one. But again, this is all in the report. And along those lines, again, "The Housing Authority will expand 2019 capital funding on staff training, sewer repair..." I assume this is on the towers, because if you're demolished in Trent Court, it's talking about sewer, about tub repairs, stove replacement, refrigerator replacement. It doesn't say what that's for, but I would assume that's the towers. And that's pretty much my question, is it's just for this board to adopt this contemporous amount of information that's associated with the housing needs of our city, probably we could talk three, four hours to have a workshop on this one, but yes, sir.
Mary, can I make a suggestion? We had a meeting several weeks, maybe even months ago now, regarding the Housing Authority, and one common theme that came out of that was the lack of communication. I think you brought up some valid questions tonight that we probably need to get an update from the Housing Authority. I'd make a recommendation that we have a meeting, work session, whatever you want to call it, with the Housing Authority. But basically, this plan is just the information that our staff has been filtered from these various agencies. Of course, there's some concerns, and one page it says one thing, and two pages it says something else, and it may just be a typo where it's supposed to say the word "not," or it's not supposed to say the word "not." But question for staff is, is there a deadline on when this has to be submitted or approved by the board and submitted?
Yes, HUD does have a deadline, so if this were not to be adopted, we would have to file for an extension from HUD. Basically, the vision of the five-year consolidated plan is to serve as a basically consolidated planning document, you know, and a strategic plan for the city. So, you know, moving forward, it doesn't necessarily mean that the funding that we're given, that we can accomplish the whole long list of things that are addressed in here, but we can identify certain strategies to use for CDBG funding, and then perhaps even other entities can take all of the data and all of the input from the outreach efforts and put it toward funding other projects.
I have a question. So if we don't adopt this tonight, you said you have to file for an extension?
Yes.
Is there any reason why? I mean, we got it in this email for this meeting, but is there any reason why we couldn't get it any sooner to be able to analyze it and possibly have these questions answered and be able to have the ability to have a meeting with the Housing Authority? Because now it feels like we're kind of pressured to vote this, even though we have some concerns in the packet. Is there any...
Yeah, there's a public comment period that we must adhere to, to meet the HUD requirements. So this is a planning document that's been in the process for many months. So we got it on this agenda because we just kind of have wrapped up that series.
What is the date, though? Is there like a date, June 30, or is there a date?
Yes.
Is June 30 the date? So we could potentially adopt it at our June 25 meeting?
We would still have to file for an extension from HUD, because they have a period where they must review the documents and provide their approval.
And it talks about much again, that the board has always been concerned with the divide or overlap or whatever of Twin Rivers Section 8 versus Section 8 for the towers and other items, and then it gets into homeless, homeless here in New Bern, shelters, veterans. So again, it's, you know, just speaking for myself, this was not one of those Carter Block motion approvals. This is, if this is five-year document, it's very important.
Yeah. And I would more than a couple of days to be able to read and analyze and get my questions answered.
Yeah, New Bern as an entitlement community, this is only the second time that we've gone through this consolidated planning process. So it, you know, I certainly understand that there are a lot of questions to it. There's a lot of things that go into this. There's a lot of requirements and things that need to be addressed to meet what HUD is asking of each entitlement community. We can always amend the plans. That is certainly something that we can do. We can amend or make corrections to that. So it's really up to the pleasure of the board at this point, what you would like to do.
Does it put our funding in jeopardy to get the extension?
It won't help any. I mean, when you got everybody out, seven there is in, and we're sitting here on a, asking for an extension, it probably doesn't help any. I know it's one thing we've been doing for FEMA reimbursement, we've been, you know, expeditiously trying to process, God said.
So Amanda, if this proposal is sent into HUD, okay, and down the line, we have to make significant changes, that can be done without any repercussion on...
Right.
On the grant money?
Correct, yes. It just, it is kind of a multi-step process to have public comment periods, to have public hearings and things like that. So we would have to take some steps to make that amendment, but it would not, it would not hurt our funding.
Well, I'll ask...
Right, and we do an annual action plan every year, so this is something that we can certainly bring back before the... Right, and we do an annual action plan every year, so this is something that we can certainly, um, bring back before the board or get feedback. Um, I certainly think, um, you know, with the redevelopment commission and many of the topics that are being discussed, um, you know, we can look at the annual action plan process differently to make sure that we are addressing um, the priorities, um, you know, that this board wants to see.
I'm always concerned when my name's attached to anything that I, you know, as a board of Alderman, that I fully understand it. I don't have to necessarily agree with that, I understand it and I could stand behind it. And that's my concern, there's a lot of statements and statements that come behind it. But I understand, you know, pulling something like this together, does it not require any, um, elected official input? Cause I know, you know, we had city manager, you had, you know, industry commissions, but it didn't require any?
Right, that wasn't necessarily a subset of the different stakeholder groups that we, we had to, um.
They just want us to adopt it.
And it, there is a lot of data in here and a lot of comments from public agencies as well that have been incorporated.
So, I think Al- Alderman Harris said it, so this is basically a statement of what we say we're going to do in our community, is that correct? Is this, this document here is a statement of what we intend to do in our community, or is it just what the need is?
It identifies the needs.
Alderman Bingle, I know you go to a lot of the Housing Authority meetings, did you see any inconsistencies in general?
You know, I, I still think, you know, I'm, I'm dealing with, and I say I've been on my phone, because I'm dealing with two citizens that are in Trent Court that are, are being evicted probably, you know, they're not, you know, the Housing Authority's saying the property's okay. I believe there's mold and there's other things in there, they're, they're needing help and assistance, there's nowhere for them to go. I mean, there's still issues out there, but the Housing Authority is separate from us, we have no jurisdiction over the Hou- Housing Authority other than to just say, hey, you know, I'm a, you're a citizen and I'm gonna try to help you, but we have no jurisdiction. So, I don't know why they're such an important component of this when we have no jurisdiction over them. And once they become private, I noticed Craven Terrace is not mentioned in this at all. Because Craven Terrace is now its own private entity. That was called the Jerry Springer Show, by the way.
Correct.
But, um, you know, it, uh, it's its own entity, and once Trent Court goes to Carolina Avenue and they demolish, they won't be part of this. So, in five years, they could potentially not be part of this.
We did reach out to other housing providers, so they did provide feedback and responses within this document.
Um, preservation management stuff, they, they have.
Yes, we did invite those other housing providers.
That's why I was, I guess I was.
You invited them, did they participate?
Did they participate?
I would have to go back to the list of stakeholders.
I don't think I saw.
My memory does not serve, there were a lot of people attending those meetings.
Well, you know, it, it's quite obvious that to get where we wanna get with affordable housing in New Bern, I guess to make the need three hundred affordable units right now. Now, the report here is saying there's probably seven hundred to a thousand displaced homes in this town. Um, so, this need is not gonna be met by either Twin Rivers or by the New Bern Housing Authority. It's gonna have to be met by private investors and the city's participation, even though we're not financially on the hook and we are indemnified, but we normally do somewhat quasi, um, participate one way or the other. So, that's very interesting, the concerns that are just in this report, which absolutely have nothing to do with the, the big plan of how we're gonna get those thousand units in New Bern.
Right, I mean, this, um, the, the funding that we get at two hundred and forty thousand dollars is not necessarily gonna be able to address the need of seven hundred people that are displaced. However, this document also is great in great timing, because perhaps, um, some of the projects we do and this information, um, putting it out there might stimulate other private investment to come in to meet this need. This planning document can be, um, you know, we have the opportunity to be able to share that with others that might want to come in and invest and, you know, tackle some of these issues that we're facing.
Is, is some of these funds, um, available to be able to, um, help individual homeowners in, um, underprivileged areas to get their house, like how we use the regular funding when they apply? Is this, are we able to?
We do, yeah, we do currently offer, um, a housing rehab program for homeowners that need to make repairs to their homes.
But are we using some of this money?
We currently are, yes.
Okay, but this money that's tied up is for shelters, for, it's already spent?
No, it's not spent yet. Our annual action plan for the upcoming year would be to, um, add these shelters.
Plus what we already do in helping individuals.
Currently are completing, completing that program. Um, and in subsequent years, we could always put more money towards housing rehab. Um, and, you know, as I stated earlier, your annual action plan can be amended based on the needs that are happening, um, within a given year.
My comment would be due to the fact that, you know, we had Hurricane Florence come in here, um. My, I would want funding, if possible, to keep continuing that process. I mean, I understand we need shelters and we have the transportation, but housing and getting people back into their homes and getting them rehabbed is way more important to me than, um, shelters, don't take that the wrong way, I'm just saying there's people that are still homeless and out on the street. So, if we have funding, if it's a dollar, it's a million dollars, I want that money to be allocated to get into these individuals back home in, um, homes that are safe for them and getting them up to code, so.
Our current, we, um, did a substantial amendment to our annual action plan to develop five housing u- five affordable housing units. So, that is something that we would be doing in addition to what is going on, um, with the shelter project.
Question, how long is it gonna take you to fi- to go back to file to correct what we just found just now? How long is it gonna take you to correct that, where we can move forward, how long is it gonna take you to do that?
Um, you mean the discrepancy within the plan? Um, we would just get clarification as to, um, what was correct, and we could, um, we could fix that before we submit it to HUD, if that's just a, a not displaced or a not. If, if it was a missing word, we could certainly get that corrected before we submitted it to HUD, if you wanted to approve it.
So, can you do that? Do you see any problem with what we had discussed with you just now? That is, is some type of inconsistency that we can go ahead and clean that up and get it repaired? Or you can go ahead and submit it?
Yes, we, um, I believe we could do that, I'm not sure how that would impact the motion. Um, I'm not sure if that was a response from the Housing Authority and we put it in the plan based on what they said. I realize in two places it says something different. I'm not sure where that information came from, if it was a survey response or an oral interview. Um, it could have just been, um, you know, misunderstanding.
Could you tell me just a little bit about the CDBG Advisory Committee?
Yes, um, the, uh, Community Advisor, or Community Development Advisory Committee is, um, a committee that you all appoint, um, for various individuals to, um, sit on that committee. We meet with them bi-monthly and they're kind of our liaison between what's going on with our CDBG program and what's going on in the community. So, we always have to have, um, community outreach efforts, and that's one way for us to tie that together and get, um, feedback, kinda creating that feedback loop.
How many people are on that?
Um, I believe it is, um.
Jamal, let's give it to the.
Who?
Jamal, one?
Jamal?
Six.
Jamara, so that, that's the, the chair.
Um, Marshall, um, what's his last name?
Marshall Williams.
There he is.
Marshall, you wanna make any comments on that? Come on up, Marshall. And, uh, Marshall is a former member of the Housing Authority, so he's very knowledgeable about what's going on in New Bern.
Just back in there, I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I'd just like to.
Well, you get on your feet, go right ahead.
I'd just like to mention that the five-year plan is, it's important to pass, cause any type of delay will give you points off the next application. And like you said, if you see any plan, any errors, you could, uh, resubmit that in the year plan. But the discrepancies was the Housing Authority, which we had nothing to do with that. We just take that information submitted in the package. So, I think the committee and the staff has done a great job to smarten your plan, so I, I hope that the board do support it.
Thank you for giving us that information, and puts a new h- light on things, for me, anyway.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the FY twenty to twenty twenty-three CDBG five-year consolidation plan and FY nineteen annual action plan.
Second.
You have a motion?
Consolidated, my bad.
You have a motion, and a second?
So, we're approving both two plans, correct?
Huh?
The annual one plus the five-year one, correct?
This was just a five-year one, wasn't it?
No, five-year and annual action plan.
Well, I'm looking at the agenda.
The agenda says five-year.
And annual.
And annual.
Okay. All right, you have a motion, and a second, is there a discussion?
Just a comment, so, maybe for next year, um, when you're doing your annual action plan. It would be really nice for Marshall, you and, and the committee to come maybe during a work session or a meeting and really update us, cause it was really difficult to see all this two or three days, you know? And really kinda digest all of this when we haven't really kinda seen the process along the way, so that would just be my comment.
Absolutely, that's a great idea, the committee helps us a lot and is very important to this process, so.
My comment would just be, I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes and approve it for the simple fact that I don't want to lose points on another application and the fact that if we do have any big issues, that they could be rectified moving forward. But like Alderman Bingle said, I would like it in advance.
Okay, well, you do have your motion and a second, I'm just letting the discussion continue until it. I'm, I'm just particularly reading this, um, interview with the New Bern Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is not troubled, there is a substandard management which is occupancy related. I guess that means that, I, I don't really actually know what that means. Occupancy rate was ninety-three percent at the time of rating, but now it is closer to a hundred, which is good. But it says there's a waiting list of eighty people for, uh, the towers. Waiting list of eighty, again, just, just reading through here, I don't, I don't know what the city's gonna do, but they, we need, we need to find we need to find some more units on the way down. Is there any further discussion on this item? Um, set a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Alderman Penze?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Avon?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, item number ten is a consideration by the board to adopt an order, ordinance for the demolition of six zero two First Street. On February eighth, twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, staff received a complaint from the Police Department about illegal activities occurring around this structure. Upon inspection, the house was found to be vacant and unsecure, Public Works boarded the home up and secured the structure on the twenty-seventh of February, two thousand eighteen. A hearing was held before the Chief Building Inspector on the ninth of April, two thousand nineteen, and the property owner was given sixty days in which to bring the structure into compliance. To date, no permits have been applied for and the structure remains non-compliant. There's a memo that's included in your packet that's attached from Mr. Ruggeri, Director of Development Services, along with the chronological list of events. The order and other documents issued by the Building Inspector, along with pictures of the property, will be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I just, uh, I wanna say one thing about this, I'm all for it, but this looks like a, a model at a new home development versus about fifty other ones around here that should have been demolished about ten years ago. And, um, again, this one is Cream and Crop versus, uh.
Is there any way to, to get Habitat involved with this, or so, I guess we have to take it, I just wish that somebody, you know, the owners would go ahead and sell it or give it to Habitat so it can be rehabbed, because, you're right, I think it looks like it can be.
But if you look at that chronological list of correspondence, yes, sir?
Mayor, I, I did have, um, someone question about the, the timeline, it looks like this one was done rather expeditiously compared to some others. And, Mr. Attorney, I'm assuming it's because we have a clear title on this, there's not a, a deed issue, is that correct?
Yeah, a, a lot of times, um, clean title, and a lot of times owners just say, I surrender, I'm not gonna do it, do what you wanna do. That makes it easy for us, there's, there's no question, and we have lots of heirs, um, or people trying, you know? A, a lot of these, there are people who are trying.
So, are we, can we sell this, can we put this up for bid to sell this?
We don't own it, is this driven to by the Police Department and their issue with a lot of crime here?
I don't know the background of this one, to be honest, I just don't know.
We, no, the thing is, they'll tear it down if they don't pay the fees and whatever, then we'll probably end up owning it, the lot, but I think the house has a lot of character.
Well, the, the process is, if the demolition, demolition ordinance is, is passed tonight, the property will be torn down, the cost will be a lien on the property. Eventually, that lien will be collected as a, in a tax foreclosure, and if not paid, the city and county will end up jointly owning the vacant lot.
Is there a way, um, assuming there's some fines on there now as it is, because it's not up to code? Is it, would it be better for the fines just to accumulate so we don't have to tear it down? So that then we could go after the property, because the, the fines would accumulate, we can go after the property
foreclose on it, and then at least we have somewhat of a house and we can get Habitat or somebody in there that'll fix it up? Well, we have to, the, the, well, the penalties are, the penalties are collected in a civil lawsuit. So, the, the, the penalties don't, don't attach as taxes. And I've not spoken, I don't know if that's spoken to the owners?
Um, yes.
Any desire to?
No.
Have you been in this house?
Uh, no, I haven't been in it, I've been by it and, uh, to answer a question, it, it was originated from the Police Department. Um, there's been a fire on another, um, there's another house on the site that, uh, recently burned. Um, we've had many conversations in the past with Habitat, Habitat isn't interested in rehabbing these older homes like this. This isn't a cost-effective rehabilitation, um, these types of properties aren't easily rehabbed and, uh, it's more, it's much easier for an organization like Habitat with their skill set of their workers that they get to start with a new site and build from the ground up. Had this conversation in the past with them, I'm willing to have it again, obviously, I'd love to find a builder who would rehab these properties. Been looking for a long time, can't find one.
Well, obviously, Mayor, members of board, the Police Department's saying there's illegal activities taking place there, and there's properties, this little, I can see it looks like there's a little blue house right beside it, is that a, is that an occupied house, do you know?
The, the burnt out one next to it?
I, I, I don't have, I don't have any.
Structures on the lot, there's a big house.
There's a little blue house.
Um, in the back, and I thought they were all yellow, if my memory's.
Yeah, this side, there's a lot of vines and stuff.
Oh, yeah, correct, yeah.
I mean, my concern is, it's like ten feet from that other properties and stuff too, and, uh, Fire Department always had, it, this is a death trap for the Fire Department's concern. And they, they try to go in these homes when they catch on fire to make sure that there's no one inside of them and they're gonna fall down around them. And if Police Department says it's breeding grounds for illegal activities, then it's their recommendation, I'm gonna listen to Police Department, Fire Department, and Jeff's office and take it down.
Oh, Alderman Astor, would this be a good candidate for tr- for the Fire Department, train it?
I, I.
Get rid of the, this structure that way?
I don't, I don't know. If, if it's in that bad a shape, it, it, this, it's changed so much, and you might have to correct me, cause it's been two or three years, but I mean, for the, for the Fire Department to burn a house now, it has to be structurally sound. I mean, they, they don't want any firemen getting hurt during a, a training exercise. So, I, you know, not knowing what the conditions of the floor is in, what conditions the roof in, and it looks like it's mighty close to some other structures too, so. Always burning homes down in, in neighborhoods like that too, it's always created a problem with the smoke, you know, bothering the residents and stuff, so. I mean, it's just, it's something the chief can look into, I'm sure, but.
It was just a question, I didn't know, that's why I asked a question.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the demolition of six O T, six O two First Street.
Second. Motion and second. Is there further discussion? City members have a roll call starting Alderman Odom?
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go to appointments. Alderman Odom, do you have appointments tonight?
Yes, sir. I haven't received a call that I believe Mister, I'm trying to find. Mark, your term is up on the TDA. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mark to that position.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same here for.
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, Alderman Best?
None.
And Alderman Kinsey?
None.
I'd like to make a point and shout to the planning and zoning board.
Is that a second or do you need a motion?
That's my, well, that's my motion.
Second.
Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just take her off the planning?
We took her off.
Well, no, she wasn't.
Order of adjustment.
She was off. No, she was on the plate. They did appoint her, but there was not a seat to appoint her to. So he had to rescind the appointment.
Got you.
Alderman Astor?
None tonight.
Alderman Harris?
None tonight.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Susanna Towton to the New Bern Appearance Commission. She's a GENT resident, and I know she will do a fabulous job. I would also like to reappoint Ellen Sheridan to the Historic Preservation Commission. She filled an unexpired term, and now she's up for full appointment.
So okay, both of those on the same. Okay, we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Also, would like to make a appointment of Molly Ingram to the Appearance Committee?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So that's appointments. City manager's report. How is the hurricane meeting for June?
Yeah, this Saturday, we have our hurricane preparedness expo, open to the public. Mr. Hughes, you might actually be better to speak about that as he's been the one that's heavily involved in the planning and coordinating with all the different vendors that will be showing up. So I'm gonna turn my time over to him if you don't mind, and they are equipped. So the event will be taking place at West New Bern Recreation Center this Saturday from two to six. We've got over twenty vendors that have signed up so far. Several of the vendors are also, will also be providing some demonstrations. We'll also have some seminars and things like that going on, so it should be a very informative time. So we are partnering with WITN, and they're actively promoting the event as well. And so we look forward to a good crowd over at West New Bern for this. Hope to see you all there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You're doing a great job, Foster.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, thank you.
It's a great partnership with WITN.
Okay, anything else? Let's see. Attorney's report?
What's important, Mayor?
New business starting with Alderman Bingle?
Just a couple of things. I have, last weekend, we had a, an animal, a pet dog, killed on East Front Street. The residents have become very upset. There was no less than fifteen, twenty emails back and forth about traffic and speed bumps and signage and everything like that. So the residents of the historic district were really concerned. So I've been in contact with Captain Fuller and the chief. And what I'd like to do is pull a committee together to look at some traffic patterns in there. And I'd like to ask Maria Cho to chair that. She previously did the Watch For Me program, chaired a committee and had several people for the Watch For Me downtown, the crosswalks, and did a great job. So I'm gonna ask her to chair this if it's okay with the board of Alderman. It's not an appointment or anything, but okay.
Well, I just want to make sure that you're not forming a committee.
I am not forming a committee, but I'm just gonna ask her to gather a group of citizens to get together like she did for Watch For Me.
Okay.
And head that group up to answer some of those questions. Yes, I won't give you any more boards.
Thank you.
Look at Mr. City Manager's face. Then I'd like to let everybody know that we are continuing to work on the noise ordinance. The residents have met with Alderman and expressed their concerns. I've met with the residents. I've met with the entertainment establishments downtown, whatever you want to call them, variety of wedding venues, bars, whatever. And now I believe there, the city manager is going to facilitate a meeting between the entertainment group and the residents, so maybe they could try to hammer it out. Residents don't like the decibel levels. I'm sure the entertainment group is not gonna like the decibel levels either. So Mr. Attorney told me to make sure they were equally unhappy. I think we've achieved that. So we're gonna be working on it, and hopefully, we're gonna have a public comment and discussion on it the next meeting, I hope. So we're working on that. And then Matt, tree grates downtown. Starting to get complaints again about, you know, the grates coming up and people potentially tripping. And I don't want to go there as far as the trees. Don't want to go there. But the rubber stuff that you used on some of the newer trees that were planted seems to be working really nicely. Is there a possibility to remove the grates and try that on a couple of trees downtown? I'm not sure, but I thought, you know, that might be better than uneven, the uneven grates that are there.
To be perfectly honest with you, Mark and I had this same conversation earlier in the week, and Foster and I had this conversation late last week. We, we too have received several concerns. Looking at a couple of different options. Foster's in the process of having the trees evaluated, and Mark and I actually walked down there this week. We looked at that, talked about doing some, some of those exact same things you just mentioned, so.
Yeah, I think just the rubber, you know, that we put on there might, because the canopy is just so beautiful. I, I know where y'all are coming from, but if there's anything we could do to somewhat mitigate that, that would be really good, so.
And I mean, there's a couple of them where, you know, yes, the rubber would help, but there's a couple of them where the actually roots have actually buckled up the sidewalk and the brick pavers, and that will have to be addressed at some point.
Or can we cut the roots back a little bit?
We're having them available.
Okay, well, if you would look into that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Montane? I need to get an update on Wood and Crossings and the letter that we both received in the mail in regards to the retention pond and Wood and Crossings and their pond and the overflowing when it rains into ours and flooding the community.
Well, as we had the conversation, I guess about a week and a half ago, and staff has had it with the homeowners association as well. I am in the process of drafting something up to give it back to them in writing.
Okay.
But it will state that, you know, the pond is a homeowner's responsibility. Once it discharges into the drainage ditch, of course, then it becomes our responsibility and we'll maintain that ditch. But I hope to get that out probably this week.
Has, has that ditch been maintained? I know one side was, but the other side I haven't seen.
We actually did the, the far side, the downstream side. We've also done the upstream side. We do still have that center section where we had some challenges for access to get to. That still needs a little bit more work, but we have been doing quite a bit of work on that ditch.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up is that next week starts Juneteenth week of New Bern. We had one day last year. And we have a whole week this time, so just make sure you go to Juneteenth of New Bern on Facebook. And it's on my Alderman page, but it starts on June fourteenth at the Craven Arts Council, five to eight. It's gonna be something nice, and we have all this information all over the place. We just come out, do something next week in honor of Juneteenth. That's it.
Alderman Bingle, did you finish? Did you have everything?
Yeah, no, I was finished. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, Alderman Astor.
Matt, do you have the results of the speed data that you had ordered for Bryce's Crossing? Where they wanted that four-way stop sign?
We did, and I believe I sent that to you quite a while ago, but the, the results of that were, the speed was minimal. There was, there was no speeding. It was very, matter of fact, I think the speed limit in that area is twenty-five, and most of the traffic was traveling less than twenty-five at that point. But I do have that. If I did not forward it to you, I certainly can do that.
I don't, I don't, you may have, and I just didn't receive it. If you don't mind, would you, you know, send it again? So what do we recommend to the residents out there? They were wanting the four-way stop sign to slow traffic down, and obviously, the traffic speed's not an issue, so.
If I'm remembering the one that you're talking about, it's a T-intersection, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Yeah, I think the way it is is exactly how it was drawn up to be. We don't see that there's a speeding issue. Didn't get any feedback from the police department that there were any traffic issues or accident history at that location. So my recommendation at this point would be leave it the way it is. However directed otherwise, we'll do something different.
Well, I mean, they stated to me the reason they wanted the stop signs was to slow traffic down. And if you would give me that data so I could forward it to the president of the HOA, and then I'll see what they want to do from there.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Stevens, is there any update under new business? Alden Chase, I drove through a couple of weeks ago, and does anybody just planning or anybody have any updates on Alden Chase where, where that project is?
I don't have any. I'm pretty sure that, unprepared, my staff probably don't have these yet tonight. Yeah, I don't have any of them. Sorry.
Okay.
We're getting that first payment come July though, right?
First payment's in July.
Right, but that's the date I need to know.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
Mr. Manager, do you have any update on the hurricane repair from the, when the lady came down from Home Lucky? Do you have any update on anything?
I guess as far as what staff has been doing with regards to residency planning, obviously, you know, we contracted with Margaret Shields to do with fund development to do some grant writing for us. She has secured grant funds in the amount to cover the first phase of the residency plan that we were going to be working on. I've tasked Mr. Ruggeri with putting together that RFQ, which he's working on now. And upon completion, we'll send that out for the folks to be able to do that. But that, that first phase is, is fully funded at this point. We're currently working on the other phases and the funding of that. I know that, just to kind of give you an idea, and I don't have it directly in front of me right now, but we have received, I know thirty thousand to cover that. We've also just recently found out that we've received, what, two hundred and thirty thousand?
Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for some drainage improvements along Metcalf, Roanoke Avenue. Where was the other one?
Metcalf.
Metcalf and Roanoke, two drainage areas that we know we've had some, some consistent drainage issues that weren't necessarily a result of, of direct damage of the hurricane, but ongoing because of hurricane-related damage. We do have some failure of the streets and things like that, that while it was not covered under FEMA, it, it, these funds through Golden Leaf cover the unfunded type things that FEMA won't cover with regards to some of the damages we received in the hurricane. So we did find out that we received that. We have another six or seven hundred thousand dollars' worth of grants that are out there right now that we've applied for or in the process of applying for. So that kind of give you an update as to where we are on, on some of that. As far as the FEMA process goes with regards to recovery from the hurricane, I know we have been, we, we had a very beneficial meeting with Dot Henderson, with the state of North Carolina, and also with some folks from FEMA who are handling all of our claims, as well as our consultants, disasters. Was it disaster event? What disaster recovery, sorry? Yeah, disaster recovery LLC. They actually, the lady that is the COO of Disaster Recovery LLC was here today being with us on several different things and reviewing some of the properties along with her staff. So we, we're deep in the midst of FEMA documentation and, and just this, this process, which is about a three-page flow line of steps that have to be met and, and have to be addressed and data submitted and accumulated accounting, financial data, everything that you can think of under the sun that has to be completed and submitted as part of the process. That's where we are right now. We, we did get some, some very positive news on the insurance front in that they, our insurance providers are fully funding the one million dollars of reimbursement on our plan. We did find that out. I think two weeks is what they, which was last week. So hopefully, we're about a week and a half, a week out of getting that check, which will finalize that payment. The, the remaining portion, which helps us out because ultimately, a lot of documentation says, well, what has your insurance paid? And so now that we have all of that finalized, everything's being submitted. I know that the debris contract has been submitted. That was about four point six million dollars. I know that we're in process with the electric department's reimbursement. That's about nine hundred and some thousand dollars. Our emergency protective measures is in the process right now as well. So we have currently, I think, was about six and a half million dollars within the portal of FEMA that's been submitted for reimbursement out of about the eight million dollars. And obviously, the big one, which has also been submitted, is the Stanley White Recreation Center through the mitigation process, which, you know, obviously, we had to kind of go through the steps to show what that damage loss was and potential replacement of costs were, so that we, we are in the process. So to kind of give you, staff is, is heavily involved in that. Our consultants are heavily involved in that. Alderman Astor, he actually sat in with a meeting with the state and with the FEMA folks, so he knows where we are and how that meeting was left. And it seems to me that, that things are starting to kind of progress and roll along really well at this point. And I guess the next steps are with this residency plan is getting this RFQ out on the street so that people can bid on it. Obviously, NEMAC and Fernleaf obviously have been contacted. We're asked them to submit on it as well. But ultimately, due to the, you know, the desire to make sure that we do the procurement and consultation services correctly, we want to make sure to send that out for the RFQ and make sure that is, is done appropriately. We are, we are fully funded on the first phase, and we'll continue to try to fund additional phases after that.
So where we are heading along?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? That's it. Alderman Best?
Yes, Mr. Montane. First of all, I just want to thank you very much, and I'm thanking you on behalf of the residents. I've got some calls from the residents over on Hazel Avenue, Washington Street area about the work that was started there on the canal. They was very appreciative of it. Also, right there on Hazel Avenue, where the, the stop sign was put, where the cones are located. I don't know if they've been taken up, but I've had some calls from residents asking if those cones could be taken up. I know the stop sign is there, so if people don't stop, then that's.
We're, we're actually in the process of making that permanent. We're gonna remove the cones, take that, kind of cut the asphalt work goes around there and to make it more of a T-intersection. That's kind of been laid out. Kind of been a test for the last year to see how it's been working. I've already directed staff to let's go ahead and move forward with that project.
Okay.
So soon you'll be seeing them out there taking care of that.
Okay. Also, I've had residents over within that area because, you know, they got flooded really bad over on Hazel Avenue, Washington Court, Washington Street. Is there any way that, and I've had a lot of residents contact me, said that they don't know when the last time that the city of New Bern has been over in that area to clean out the drains because they were having problems when they just have heavy rains. So is that something on your list to do for the drain cleanage?
Certainly. If you have a certain area, I'll talk to you. I know you said Hazel Avenue.
Hazel Avenue, Washington Street, yes, Washington Court.
Well, but we can certainly get staff over there and take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for you. Also, Mr. Bouchard? You don't have to come up. I just want to mention to you, I was over on the Oaks Road area, and I don't know if this is a power line or if this is a cable line, but the utility pole right there by the bridge is leaning. It's like it's gonna fall. So if someone could check that out, you know the location I'm talking about, the Jack Creek Smith Bridge? Okay, the pole is right there at the, at the end of the bridge, and it's, I don't know if it's electrical lines or not, and that would create a problem if it does fall. Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Stevens, I just. I didn't know if he was writing something important there.
I'm always writing something important if you're talking.
I just want to thank you for speeding up the process. You know, you implemented a, a schedule for the workplace violence and active assault response. I'm really pleased to see that you've already put that in place, and training will be coming up for. I'm really pleased to see that you've already put that in place and training will be coming up for our employees and division heads and.
And and you all.
Exactly, and I think that's a plus because esp- especially with the last incident that happened in killing twelve people in Virginia Beach. I think that's, I I just wanna commend you for that, you and the Police Chief. I'm not, I'm quite sure he's had a part in this as well, and thank you very much.
Which may also include uh some of our uh attendees here at our meetings dealing with sunlight coming in through the windows, um, so.
Yeah, exactly. And also wanna make one more comment and um. I just, I just wanna make one more comment that, um, I'm really pleased to see that you two are sitting back over there now, because I had some complaints from from our, from our citizens that they didn't want to look at your back, they wanna look at your face. And that's, I was really pleased when I come in today and I saw that, so whomever, put your seating arrangements back like they were before, thank you.
Well, I'm working on it, okay? So as you, if you noticed, some things are missing and it's a work in progress, but um we're gonna continue to make this place a better.
And then also Miss Bingle over on the wall over there.
Well, she'll get there. I'm bu- I'm trying to blow her up.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Odom?
Uh, Matt, I'm just kidding, you stay there. I didn't, I didn't wanna be the only one that didn't go yet.
Somebody needs to call Jordan.
No, I don't have any.
Okay, any other new business at this time? Uh, let's go to, do we need to close session tonight?
Yes, a very briefly, pursuit of one forty-three thirteen eleven A three to maintain our current coverage, um, and pursuit of one forty-three thirteen A five to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
So move. Motion second, any discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries.